This meeting is being recorded.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our early session. Our meeting of council at four o'clock on June 14th, 2023, and I'll call the meeting to order. And I know I have my agenda for the 5:30. Did you give me the agenda for the four? I can wing it. I got the motions. Motions in the ocean here, that's the 5:30. We have four o'clock. Lovely, thank you. Obviously printed out. So I'll call the media or ask if there's any declarations of conflict of interest. Being none. It's great, sir, I was just getting my papers. And we're not doing the land acknowledgement on this special meeting, we'll do that at the next one, very good. So now I have a motion moved by councillor Ball, seconded by deputy mayor continent, the contents of the special meeting of council agenda for June 14th, 2023 be approved. All those in favor? It's carried. And just for the record, councillor Post is unable to attend the four o'clock session due to work commitments. I haven't heard from councillor Downer, but clearly not here, not online. And councillor East, I believe, is online, I see him with a beautiful background somewhere in Georgian Bay, so he's with us in spirit here, right on. You're just a dark shadow. Because the background is really bright, so. Anyway, there we go, now we can see it. Alright, so we'll cut right to this, the purpose of this one is that public meetings and hearings, section 4.1, we have a proposed zoning by law amendment for 823 King Street, ZBA 06-20. And so I'd like to call the public meeting to order. This public meeting is being held under the planning act to consider an application for a proposed amendment to the town zoning by law 2004-90. Respecting 823 King Street, a proposed change to the existing draft plan, a subdivision is also proposed. This is the first of two applications to be heard together this afternoon. In accordance with the planning act, if a person does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or make written submissions before an approval is given, you will not be entitled to appeal the decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And you will, you may not be added as a party to a hearing on an appeal to the OLT unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there's a reasonable grounds to do so. The purpose of the public meeting is to hear from the residents and to see clarity on the application, council is not making a decision on the application or taking a position. Staff will report back in the future with a recommendation report after considering all comments heard this afternoon. Should you wish to make written submissions regarding this matter, please direct them to the clerk and they will also be considered before council makes a decision. This is your opportunity to speak and council encourages you to do so. So I'll now ask the town's planning consultant, Tim Kane, to introduce the application and confirm notification and to note any correspondence received. And we have a PowerPoint.
Thank you, worship members of council, good to be here again and keeping to a very strict timeline tonight, given the full agendas that I've, that I've seen. And I'm getting a smile from the clerk for saying, or deputy clerk for saying that. Yes, thanks for introducing me, I am representing the town and assisting with this application and moving it through the planning consideration process. Also tonight, that will be speaking to the proposal itself is Corey Chisholm from MHBC Planning on behalf of the applicant. You know, we will answer your questions as best we can, we'll give brief overviews, I'll look at the history of the site and, and some of the background. Corey will look at the, the proposal itself, and then we'll answer any questions and certainly list any comments that we hear. And rest assured that anything that we hear tonight will form part of a recommendation report likely in the fall. When we come back to council after we've carefully considered those observations and comments that we've, that we've heard tonight. There are two applications, the first one is going to be a residential application, 823 King Street, that's showing up on the screen now. You know, we didn't intentionally want to fill your dance card so full tonight, but there is a second application and there is a benefit to hearing these two applications together. Since they are side by side, quite different in nature. But there is an advantage to seeing them and listening to them side by side so that we can best integrate and make recommendations at the same time for, for both properties, next slide please. This is just a copy of the notice, we don't expect anyone to read it, but we do want to show it as, as what went out in the mail, so notification was carried out in accordance with the planning act with that sign onsite and posting in the newspaper. And we are, here we are tonight to talk about that application, next slide please. And this is the context of the site here, it's a little hard to see in some pictures here, but we're talking about two sites, so the first site's 823 King Street, and this is a former draft plan of subdivision, most recently is before council for a renewal of its approval. Back in March, I believe, before it expired, and that was essentially just a hold to maintain the existing permissions that they had. And knowing that this application was moving forward to essentially rejig it or tweak it. To accommodate, you know, a different, different forms of housing, different lot sizes. And also more importantly, to reflect lands that are being made available within the site for additional residential development. Those lands formerly had a storm pond location on them. As well as a piece that was transferred in a land exchange with the town to facilitate the soccer fields that are existing to the west on this picture. Directly to the north, our existing and probably most sensitive interface is the residential subdivision that was implemented some time ago, to the west are commercial uses and employment uses along King Street. To the south is the next application that we're going to talk about. Those are lands that are already earmarked or have permissions for industrial manufacturing uses. There will be a shore, there will be a shared stormwater facility which Corey will speak to when he's talking about the proposal. That facility will essentially lie between the two sites along the south boundary of that red line that you see on the screen before you. And service both properties, so again, that's why these applications are kind of connected at the hip when it comes with respect to stormwater and and looking at them collectively. Next slide please. And again, just taking into account those things that, you know, we will be considering, you know, some of those existing uses that I mentioned. You know, the existing residences along the one boundary to our north are certainly top of mind for us. St. Teresa's High School and integrating into that has been a consideration of the application as well, next slide please. Existing townhouses to the east, although they don't directly about our site, these are east of William Street. You know, they do form a character in that area. And there will be townhouses in this proposed, in this development as well. So we will be mimicking some of that character moving forward if this application is successful. Immediately to our east is not one of your noisier neighbors, it's a, it's a self-storage facility, but it is zoned for manufacturing employment uses, so that has to be taken into consideration as well. Next slide please. And then finally, looking at some of the industrial uses in the vicinity and commercial use in the vicinity. Both on King and on Highway 12, you know, certainly these are important uses of the community, you know, we don't want to impact their operations. At the same time, the subject lands are already been. You know, they've already had permissions for residential uses, so we're not introducing a new use tonight, we're simply tweaking that use to accommodate some additional housing product on there as well as using up some land that's been freed up because of the relocation of the stormwater management pond, next slide please. The soccer fields, again, that will be a community asset that we want this proposal to integrate into. And then other commercial uses along King Street. Next slide please. And this is where we get into the dry planning material, this plan is, this is schedules from the official plan, it quite clearly shows that boundary mark of employment versus residential. So we will be talking about the residential piece for this application. And then switching to the purple area to our south for the next application, but again, it does show councils' long-term direction and intention for these two sites to develop residential, in the case of the application that we're talking about right now. And for the next application to be considered as employment moving forward, next slide please. And again, this is the zoning map, difficult to read, but just want to show you the evidence that those various zone categories are scattered across the site, this application is successful would, you know, introduce a couple of new zones within that subdivision and basically shift the boundaries that you see on that zoning map before you. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Corey to talk about what's being proposed and then we'll be here to answer questions afterwards. Thank you.
So working, perfect. So thank you, good afternoon, members of council, members of the public and town staff. As Tim mentioned, my name's Corey Chisholm, I'm a partner with MHBC Planning in our Berry office. And I'm here before you this afternoon on behalf of the applicant related to both the first application we'll speak to as well as the following application we'll speak to a little later. Would like to thank town staff on their efforts with this proposal today, we've been working through this for a little bit, we've had a number of meetings to work through some of the design issues and we feel like we're in a good position to bring this forward and present it to both members of council and the public for some additional input and comments. With me this afternoon is Halyar Hanson with the owner of Pratt Developments. And also joining virtually is both the project civil engineer, John Ingram with Jones Consulting. As well as the project ecologist, Sarah Murphy with Asmus Environmental. So I'll be taking members of council and the public through the presentation. When we do get into the question period, I think Tim and I will do our best to answer any questions, however, if there are anything very specific to those disciplines, we have them available as well to jump in if needed. I should point out too, if there are questions that come up, that we don't have all the answers for you right on hand this afternoon. We're taking notes of all the comments and questions we hear this afternoon and we will be following up with a detailed comment response matrix providing answers in writing to all of the, the comments and questions we hear this afternoon. So with that, my presentation, it is combined into one, it is broken out, first the residential and then we'll get into the industrial lands to the south, so I'll take you through the first half, the residential, I think we'll, we'll have some discussion and then I'll be coming back up later to complete the presentation with the industrial lands. So if we could go to the next slide. So as Tim mentioned, this is a bit of a zoomed out image showing the location of the two sites. This first site we're talking about is the residential site at 823 King Street. And then later we'll be getting into the industrial or employment lands at 16533 Highway 12 immediately to the south. Next slide. This is zoomed in on the aerial image, but just to clarify, on the residential site, the applications that are proposed is a red line revision, so there's an existing draft plan approved subdivision. We're proposing some changes to that subdivision, which will take you through in a bit more detail. There is a corresponding zoning by law amendment application that relates to the red line. And what that is, is to align the zoning, there's currently site-specific zoning that aligns with the current subdivision and we need to make some revisions to align with the revised subdivision. For the lands to the south, it's, it is currently zoned for industrial type use, so we only need to submit a draft and a subdivision application on those lands. Next slide. So I think I'll skip over this slide, Tim went over it, but the yellow is the residential and the purple is the, the industrial lands. And similarly, Tim went over this one as well, shows the site in blue, has a bunch of site-specific zones for the residential subdivision. And the lands to the south are zoned industrial. Next slide. So in support of the proposed applications, both myself and our project team have had to complete a number of technical reports and studies to support the applications. So just, just a quick overview, we had to file archaeological reports, environmental impact assessment and study. Hydro geological report, both a functional servicing and stormwater management report. Traffic impact study as well as an urban design and architectural control guidelines. And we've also completed a series of plans, we've submitted the draft plan of subdivision and the red line plan of subdivision. And we've also completed some preliminary landscape and fencing concepts as well as streets and driveways and parking plan. Next slide. So specific to the residential site, next slide please. So as mentioned, there's two applications proposed on the residential lands, the first is the red line revision to that existing draft plan of subdivision. And the changes primarily relate to a number of items, one is the relocation of the existing approved stormwater management pond. The existing approved plan had a smaller pond specifically sized to deal with the stormwater only on the residential lands. Through the evaluation of the two sites, it is more efficient to provide one comprehensive stormwater management pond. And that'll actually deal with the stormwater from both the residential site, the industrial site, and it will also help the town deal with some uncontrolled flows coming from lands to the north to help resolve that ongoing matter. We also are incorporating additional lands within the draft plan, as Tim mentioned, there was previously a land swap, so there were some lands that weren't approved as part of the last subdivision that this land, this application would bring into the subdivision. And we also are introducing some additional lot types. And specifically, we're introducing some 10 meter or 33 foot frontage single detached lots, which are a bit smaller than some of the lots that were currently approved. As well as introducing six meter or approximately 20 foot townhouse product size as well, so there are larger lots, which I'll, I'll take you through, but the smaller lots help implement greater intensification on the site from what's approved today. And also introduces a smaller unit size both at the townhouse and the single detached dwelling unit type to help, to help provide a more affordable or attainable starting price point for those units. The zoning by law amendment application really will just align the existing zoning to match the proposed revised subdivision. So it changes where the residential, sorry, where the single detached and the townhouse units are located and it will introduce two new site-specific zones. And those are required to permit the smaller, single detached dwelling and the smaller townhouse dwellings. Next slide. So this drawing, when we overlay an old plan and a new plan with red lines, it can be very confusing to see what has changed, so we developed this colored concept to try to identify that a bit more clearly. So we've broken up, this is the proposed plan in front of you here, the different colors represent the different unit types, there's five different sizes of units proposed, six meter and 7.6 meter townhouses. As well as 10 meter, 12 meter and 15 meter, single detached dwellings. So the areas we've circled in blue, you'll see a number or a plus or minus, so that's just relaying the change in units compared to the currently approved plan. So one thing that we've tried to do is keep the changes around the perimeter of the site to a minimum, so you'll see along the top there in areas, there's no change, plus one unit, plus five unit, again, no change on the east side. As well as along the bottom, we've actually reduced the lots by one. And the primary area for those increases, you can see are central to the site where we've located some of those smaller type units. As well as the big numbers you'll see on the west side there, plus 21 and plus 23. That's both where the storm pond previously was, so there there wasn't lots in a lot of that area, so of course it leads to a large increase as well as the additional lands as part of that land swap with the, the town soccer fields just to the west. What you can also see on this slide is the new proposed stormwater management pond. It's not in color because it is located on those industrial lands, but it's immediately south of the, of the colored residential lands, you can see there. Next slide. So this table here summarizes the change in unit type and count from the current approved plan to the new approved plan. So the, the two I'll take you to is, you'll see the single detached 10 meters, that's the new size being introduced, there was none in the current approved plan and we're introducing 48 of those units. Similarly, the six meter townhouse, again, that's a new smaller size unit being proposed, so there was zero in the current plan and we're proposing 80 of those in the new plan. And you'll see the total unit count has increased from 202 to 267 through the proposed revisions. I would like to point out, while the town current zoning by law doesn't permit as of right either the 10 meter or the six meter unit size, both of those types of units have been implemented in other developments throughout the town through site-specific zoning by law amendments such as what we're proposing before you today. Next slide please. So this just goes into a bit more detail on those site-specific zones that are being proposed again to facilitate those, those smaller units. So you'll see, we have to request both a reduced minimum lot area as well as a minimum lot frontage for those units. The maximum lot coverage isn't proposed to be increased through those amendments. Next slide please. So this slide again in color identifies the different zones that will be tied and we will be zoning the different unit sizes through the site-specific zoning by law amendment, so that will ensure council and the public that those size units that are proposed will be located where they're being identified. Next slide please. One key item that we considered is the interface with the existing residential lands to the north. It's hard to tell on plan view, there is quite an elevation change from where those existing lots along Christine Drive back on to the property line down to where the proposed dwellings will be in the new proposed subdivision along Street A. Those lots are deeper, they're generally between 45 and 50 meter, meters deep. Where a typical lot is usually around 30 meters deep. So there is additional depth there, which certainly helps with that transition. And there is actually an existing requirement in the current approved plan, which is proposed to be maintained and carried forward. Which is to provide a five meter tree preservation strip along that northern property line to help maintain some of those mature trees that are there today. And we have provided two sample cross-sections of what this interface will look like and that's what those two red arrows represent is the two sample lots that we selected, but the topography along that whole area is very similar, it does shift in spots, but it generally falls quite a bit down as we come down into our lands. Next slide please. So these are the, the cross-sections that we put together to show how that elevation change is proposed, so on the left you'll see existing dwellings along Christine Drive. And you'll see that elevation changes, it drops down into the proposed Pratt Developments lands. The trees that are identified on there are located within the five meter tree preservation area that's required to be maintained. And then you'll see the, the topography continues to slope down before through engineered lock grading, we'll be providing a flat area for the rear yards before we get into the, the dwellings. Next slide please. So that concludes my presentation as it relates specifically to the residential lands, certainly we'll be coming back up to, to speak to the employment lands in a bit more detail. And happy to answer any questions member of council or the public may have. Thanks.
Thanks, I'll go right away to any public in attendance, I'll open the meeting now to comments from the public, if there are any. Please come up to the podium, state your name and your address and ask away. Welcome.
Oh, not used to this normally, I don't need a microphone. My name's Debbie Messenger and I live at 343 Rose Crescent, which is off Galloway and Kirk. And I guess, first of all, I'm saddened to think that we're losing more green space in Midland. Because we've lost a lot of green already, but that is one comment that I want to get out there and this is not going to affect where I live right at the moment, but we're, we have a dead end at the end of Rose Crescent and Kirk. And there possibly could be a road going through there, I'm not sure with, if that's in the plan, I mean, I'm glad I had my own little meeting because it was a little bit more clearer. I also have a garden that I've maintained for, I've maintained for 20 some years, my husband was in the home for 35 years. And I've just wondered, would we lose that? Even though it's on private property, it was keeping the four, the bush back. I have this according to S31 of the Real Property Limitations Act. A prescriptive easement arises when a right is enjoyed for 20 years without interruption or consent by the landowner. There are specific legal requirements before the court considers a right enjoyed without consent or without interruption. In other words, if nothing has been told to us by the owner pros or cons about my garden that I have there, would I lose it, is my question. According to this, it's no. That is a question that I have. That's it. And also maybe with saying what's going on with these properties, housings. I think it would be maybe easier because the map was a little hard for us to see at the back. Maybe is it left of a soccer field, back of the soccer field, like just to give us geographically a little bit better. What part, what part of the streets are we talking when we're talking about residential? And my one other question is, what factories are we bringing into the area of industrial? Thank you.
Thanks. When, when we get to the industrial presentation in a couple minutes, it's technically a separate meeting, come on back up and let's get your questions on that one, as far as the response to your historic use of the garden. That's been recorded and we don't typically get answers kind of in real time like this, but we will get a response to you as part of the package. Thank you very much, and was there anything unclear from the graphic, did you want to see the graphic again where the, where the houses sort of intersect with the existing property, would that be helpful? Sure, let, we'll get that up on the screen again and just see whether that helps immediately answer your questions, if not, we'll take another question for me, then I believe you have another gentleman ready to go.
Thank you, so as I commandeer, as I come into the seat here, so just off this slide. So Fraser Drive. The last lady who spoke made comments, I believe you live on, in the vicinity of Kirk Drive and Rose Crescent where the mouse is on the left-hand side of the screen. So this development would start down at the south end of Fraser Drive essentially. And then continue on across east of King Street. And all the way along basically parallel to Christine Drive to the north. And then extending down to the industrial lands that are also vacant, so it's, it's behind the soccer fields essentially, so if you're in the soccer fields. There's other lands further to the east and behind the soccer fields when you're on King Street. The lands don't quite extend all the way to William, they get close, but they don't quite touch William Street. So the road stub that is being talked about is this one down here in the, in the bottom left of the screen, so at the moment that's being proposed is to provide access for three lots down in that area. It's also good planning generally, because we don't know what the future uses of these lands are or how they may develop in future or if they will develop in future. But the idea is to create opportunities for access to them later on. If that is the case, then this road would roughly align with the end of Kirby, Kirby Street, which is on a previous slide, so you know, there would be a potential road connection in future, but you know, much like this public meeting where we're discussing this application, those lands would go through a similar public meeting and and any impacts of a, of a future road connection would be discussed at that meeting.
Thanks, maybe I'll just leave these lights dimmed so you get a better view of the screen, there's a gentleman like to approach the mic, sure, just press the button until it turns on red and give us your name and your address, please.
Okay, Simon Denton, I live at 371 Park Avenue, which is at the end of Fraser Drive. Okay, there's, right now there's six homes. Yeah, you got it. And so behind Fraser Drive, the town saw fit. To build an access road to the sewers. There are, I believe, three sewer. Access covers. And the reason for that is my home has had sewage in it twice. The. School was blamed twice. I don't, we we never really got to the bottom of the whole thing. And so that so the town saw fit to put that access road in. With culverts going north, south. I'm just wondering. If those houses are put in behind us. And we have a third backup. How does a truck get in there? To access those. Manhole covers. It's obviously sewage in your basement, a finished basement is not ideal. So this is something I've I've been worried about for quite a while. Plus, you know, drainage has been mentioned a few times. And I've walked extensively in that whole area. When the soccer fields were put in. The water stayed approximately three times longer. There have been some additional drainage ditches put in there, which has helped somewhat. But not to the way the extent it was before the soccer fields. So we're gonna. Gentlemen, you're gonna put in some houses in behind us, obviously, and that we get. But is there any way we can deal with this problem and still keep that access? This is my biggest. And once again, like, I mean, basically, we're gonna we're putting that in, we're putting that subdivision in swamp. Right now. Right, it is a very wet piece of land. Okay, that's my two concerns, really. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. That's well, that's noted and we'll have responses as part of that answer file. Here, is there anyone else who'd like to approach and speak to this subdivision planning issue at the public meeting? Thank you very much, just press the little button, turn the mic on and introduce yourself and state your address, please.
My name is Marty Secaris and I wasn't planning on talking today, but before the meeting started, I quickly went through the documentation and a few things came to mind. And I, if I understand correctly, it's not today's agenda, today's agenda is just to. Throw in an extra twenty sixty seven houses in there. But for council and staff to think about it, I'm sure you have, but let us know. My concerns are traffic concerns. First of all, it's kind of a question also, like I said, I. I looked very quickly and it looked like a traffic study has been done last November. But it seems that it was done between four and seven P M. Which is, I think, a little misleading because we all know Santerias is right there and whoever travels along Galloway knows that the area is just an absolute nightmare. Because of school buses, teachers, kids, everything else, so a traffic study, if it has been done. Between four P M and seven P M, that's very disleading misleading because by then. It's it's all over, so between, you know, one and six o'clock would have been more more current. So my question and basically I'm asking staff and council to. Let town residents know what the plans are for roads. Because it's on none of these maps, I looked into it quickly, but we are talking about. Like, I think, two hundred sixty seven houses. And I know the area quite well, and I know the road like. Number eight twenty three is almost nonexisting, like it's maybe a dirt road between the Pizza Nova Plaza and Dreammax. And going to the soccer fields, so if that road is. Is the entry point for two hundred sixty seven houses times. Two cars, let's say, that's quite a lot, and I know there is going to be one entrance from Pratt Avenue. Which again, just adds to congestion on 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 Galloway. So initially, I thought there's gonna be. I thought the two properties, because it's the same owner, I'm thinking the plan is to have an entrance from Ivy twelve, I might be wrong. Maybe from William Street. So anyway, I just would like to get some. Put some thought into it and communicate to the town what the road. What what are the plans for roads? Because this is we are talking about a lot of houses and and a lot of traffic and King Street is congested, we all know as it is. William Street, not so bad right now, and Galloway is just an absolute nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if that's, is there a spoiler alert that there is another road that's going to be in the next public meeting on the next graphic? Okay, so we'll maybe let's get that get to that in a moment then. Alright, so maybe last call for any members of the public that would like to ask a question about this presentation. Alright, well, there's no further comments. Thank you very much, our members of the public, we can't do this without you, we appreciate you coming to the public meeting. And I'll call this specific public meeting to an end. And I now have a motion and assurances that your questions have all been documented and there will be responses drafted that you'll be. You'll see and everyone else who follows along with this file will see publicly. And more opportunity to communicate with us, of course, throughout the planning process. So I have a motion here moved by Council Emeritus, seconded by Deputy Emer Cotton, that Staff Report CSR twenty twenty three dash forty four Public Meeting Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application Number ZBA oh six twenty for eight twenty three King Street. Dated June fourteenth twenty twenty three, be received for information. Any questions, counsel? Online, okay, all those in favor? You opposed? Carries? Alright, so now we move into our next public meeting. I do need to read the preamble, even though you've heard it, sorry about that, folks, it's just procedure and policy. I'd like to call this next public meeting to order. This public meeting is being held as part of an application under the Planning Act to consider an application for a proposed draft plan of subdivision respecting sixteen five thirty three Highway twelve. The site is already zoned to allow manufacturing duties. This application is about the subdivision of the property into smaller pieces of land for potential future use, servicing and a new road. While recent changes to the Planning Act do not give the opportunity for residents to appeal the planning application. To the Ontario Land Tribunal, the town can still have public meetings to hear comments that residents may have, and we are. Any oral or written submissions heard as part of this application will be considered prior to the town making a decision about the application. The purpose of the public meeting is to hear from residents and to seek clarity on the application. Council is not making a decision on the application or taking a position today. Staff will report back in the future with a recommendation report after considering all comments heard this afternoon. Should you wish to make written submissions regarding this matter, please direct them to the clerk and they will be considered before council makes a decision. This is your opportunity to speak and council encouraged to do so. So I'll now re-invite our town's consultant, Tim Kane, to introduce the application, confirm notification and note any correspondence received.
Thank you, worship, this is like Groundhog Day condensed. Good to be here again tonight, next slide, please. So this is part two of the of the two sites that we're talking about in the employment lands to the south of us. This is a copy of the notice that was that was put out through. Through mail to the newspaper and and a site on a sign on site. We have had one submission received from a business owner on Highway twelve, just expressing concerns. Not specific, but certainly just in general about, you know, what development of these lands may have, so we have reached out to him since receiving that yesterday. And we will continue those discussions once we connect. Next slide, please. Again, a little bit hard to see, but the lights turned down help a little bit. Corey's presentation will probably highlight the site more, but these are the lands in between the residential piece that we just talked about and and Highway twelve. They basically wrap around existing industrial and commercial uses fronting Highway twelve at the moment. These lands do extend over to William Street to the east and they don't quite reach over to King Street, they they do and. Just to the west on that screen or that red line, certainly across the road, we have other industrial and commercial uses. This area is considered quite important from an employment. Point of view and and certainly, you know, we heard one of the questions before or one of the comments about, you know, what's what's being proposed here, essentially the uses are already in place for the site. Commercial industrial uses are already freed on the site. The idea is to carve up the site into smaller pieces of land that, you know, will probably make those pieces more marketable. To to have businesses come in, you know, who won't necessarily need as much land in one piece as what you're seeing on the screen. But certainly would have a choice of of smaller pieces to bring employment uses to this vicinity, which is always good news. And as Corey already mentioned too, that storm pond along the north side of the site in this case, you know, in between this site and the residential site. Not only, you know, is a better solution from a stormwater point of view. But also was quite purposeful when you saw that shape being long and thin along that entire boundary. The idea is to help with that separation between employment and residential, so. You know, if this application is approved, you know, the location of that storm pond. You know, intervening buildings happening on smaller parcels, you know, all of those things will go to to benefit and increasing the buffer to those residential uses to the north. Next slide, please. Again, just some of the considerations around this site. You know, we can see the the road to the west that's that's currently at a dead end and that will form part of the part of the application and access from the western part of that site. And then the self-storage units along the east side of William Street, next slide, please. In this case, the townhouses are, you know, closer to this application, that's something that we do want to take into account. The proposed road that Corey will speak to has been aligned to look to line up with a local street across there so that we're not, you know. Pushing traffic and lights into into the front yards of these properties and certainly lining up the existing road network. And then the other picture there just showing surrounding uses, which, you know, this would be considered compatible with what's being proposed. Next slide, please. Again, more examples of those businesses along Highway twelve that I mentioned, next slide. And again, more examples, you know, reinforcing the importance and the amount of activity that's happening in this area that, you know, this application would certainly be there to complement. Next slide, please. Again, the the boring planning bits, this slide showing clearly that differentiation between the employer, between the employer lines to south and purple residential lands to the north in yellow, next slide, please. And then the zoning map that we've already seen numerous times, I'm not going to dwell on that, but again, just showing that. Industrial uses and commercial uses already permitted on these lands, this application is to break up those lands into smaller pieces to attract future employment uses. And I believe that concludes my slide deck and I'll leave it to Corey to talk about the proposal itself. Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks, members of council and members of the public, so I'll conclude the presentation as it relates to the employment lands. I'd like to thank Mr. Kane for his introduction on the the presentation. So if we could go to the next slide. So this slide, I I think it does help put both developments into context as it has the both plans. Aligned, so you can see how that connects as well as with the surrounding street network. You can see those three soccer fields, just so members of council and public can be oriented, but you can see the three soccer fields kind of in the top left there. So we do have the residential wrapping around the top and east of those. And now we're going to speak to the industrial lands, which are on the south side and then down towards Highway twelve. Just a couple items to clarify as it relates to the proposed new roads. I think one member of the public had a question, as I think the existing act access off of King Street. Might look like an unimproved dirt road at the moment. All new proposed roads are to be standard town municipal roads. So those will, through the detailed engineering design process, be designed to meet all applicable town standards. So those will be constructed, they will be paved, two lane roads, sidewalk, sewer and water, all those requirements that you would see. In town in any urbanized area would be implemented when the proposed developments move forward through to the construction stage. One thing I'd also like to point out is in regards to the connection. So there isn't a direct road connection between the residential and the industrial lands. And that was done intentionally for a few reasons. Our traffic consultant did evaluate that as part of their report and identified that there was not a need from a traffic flow perspective to provide that connection from the residential lands, the north down to the industrial lands. So when there isn't a need and we look at land use, it is a more efficient design to reduce. Required road and and infrastructure and maximize developable area, whether it be for. For residential units or industrial commercial land or for the stormwater management pond. At the end of the day, the roads will be assumed by the town, so as we can try to make those as efficient as possible to minimize future maintenance and upkeep costs. The other reason we look to not provide that direct connection is that. We didn't want, while it might disperse some residential traffic coming out or into the subdivision, it also might add new traffic coming through. The residential associated with those commercial industrial uses. So by separating them, that'll avoid any of that heavier commercial industrial trucks, delivery type vehicles from coming into the the residential lands. Other item I'd like to point out here is the location of the stormwater management pond, so that's that big, long, skinny block along the top there. And that was purposely located in that location to provide a natural separation and buffer. Between the residential lands to the north and the industrial employment lands to the south. So that block in width is approximately seventy meters. So it does provide quite a bit of separation between the the rear lot line of those residential houses. And the north lot line for those future industrial commercial parcels. The stormwater management pond, modern ones are designed with naturalized landscaping. And there is always a required service access road around the pond for maintenance activities. But with modern requirements, they are designed so that they can be used as as kind of a walkway, natural amenity feature. Men in many newer subdivisions, residents will make use of those as a walking trail if if they want to take their dogs out, so this will provide quite a large looping. Naturalized trail feature. And that separation and landscaping will help provide a separation and buffer between the the two land uses that are proposed. Next slide, please. So this is just zooming in on the proposed industrial subdivision. So we see there is only one new street proposed on these lands, Street A, and those will connect Brandon Street on the west side. Over to William Street on the east side. The blocks, we we do show them being subdivided here, in fact, they would be five large blocks. This is just an example of how they could be subdivided in the future, it'll really depend on the needs of individual end users that come forward. So by doing this approach and providing the larger blocks. If someone came forward and wanted to purchase a whole piece for for a large commercial or industrial use. That would be available to them, however, if they wanted to come in and say, hey, we only need an acre, we only need two acres. We could quickly carve off a piece to suit through what's known as the removal of part lot control process. So it does provide flexibility to be able to accommodate different size end users in the future in in a rather. Quick manner as it relates to planning approval processes. Mr. Kane mentioned that the sites are currently designated in the town's official plan and zoned in the town zoning by law. So there isn't any specific uses proposed at this point in time. The landowner is a developer and looking to seek approvals to facilitate the construction of the site, but they would rely on future. Commercial industrial office type end users to come forward. And then we would look at providing parcels sized to suit and. It should be noted that all of those future end users would also be required to go through the site plan control process when they do come forward with specific proposed buildings or land uses. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation here today and looking forward to hear any comments from members of council or the public. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So without any further ado, I'll invite members of our public who have any questions about this phase of the the plan to approach the mic. Just repeat your name and your address and. Just repeat your name and your address and and ask your question.
Yes, got it. Considering I wasn't planning on talking, I talked quite a bit. I should have taken a note of the page that I was at. I was looking what interests me is the traffic and. And bio. The environmental impact. So I glanced through that because it was quite quite long, but what I did notice that. And you would know better or whoever studied it will know better better. It was, it was just said. The some yellow circles that are vet lands. And that. If my understanding is are to be protected and I don't see them on this map. In the, in the study section in the impact study, it was called. Yellow, kind of yellow circles, like I said, that's what I. I just remember. So that's my only thing. I don't see it on this map. It looks like it's going to be totally. Allowed for industrial development and I'm just worried about the birds and the plants and the trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to stand and deliver? All right, council, are there any counselors with questions or? Developers? I I would go with either one because I did forget to include you the last time. So. Please, if you have any questions on either the first, you know, residential unit or commercial. Deputy Mayor, and then we'll go to Council Meritus.
Thank you, your worship. I I had a question just on the. Both the proposed. Industrial and the residential and. There is a significant. Issue of water drainage that goes to Little Lake. And it's a natural flow underneath the the surface of the top soil. I guess the concern is just looking at the the wet pond, the stormwater management plan. Taking into consideration the natural flow versus what's going to be held in place and then. Reversing to the flow out, I guess. Has there been any studies further to that? Kind of natural flow of of the drainage system. Into Little Lake because it incorporates a larger area and not just the. Area that you're talking about. So I mean, I'm just wanting to know if there was. Another study regarding the that. Thank you.
Thanks, and that's an excellent question through the chair. In short, the there's two studies that relate to water and flows. There's the stormwater management report that the civil engineer prepares. And there's also a hydro geological report that looks at the groundwater and those do work together. The I can speak briefly to the the surface drainage, which is the stormwater management component. We did have a hydro geological report prepared and submitted, and I know the Severn Sound. Environmental Association has reviewed that and and provided comments which we've. Responded to and and addressed. I'll have to take the specific comment about the groundwater flows back and we'll we'll certainly circle back. Through Mr. Kane with the response on that. The stormwater management from a surface water perspective. For both sites as well as there's currently flows from the north that are coming uncontrolled onto the the residential lands. The way the the grading has been designed is to capture. Those flows and directed to the stormwater management pond where it's. A treated for both quantity and quality. That pond will outlet to the east to William Street. Where it will tie into the existing drainage ditch network there, which as I understand eventually. Ties into a tributary of the Y River and then to the Y River and downstream. So that's the from a surface water perspective. How the drainage solution is proposed on the site. And like I said, from a groundwater perspective, I don't know offhand, but we will circle back as we those detailed reports were previously completed.
Any follow up? Are you good to go?
I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Council Meritus.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon, through you two. This is, I guess, to staff question. Seeing these, the comments from the public and and you're putting together a report and this will come back to council. Will will all those. Questions that will be submitted or provided to the the public will that all those answers come back to council in that report? Just like the. The one gentleman that had an issue on the employment lands had 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 written in with that his concerns come back to council. We see those reports.
And through your worship to the counselor. Yes, it's it's standard procedure to basically capture every comment and question that we've heard tonight and and put that into a comment matrix so that. You know, when that report does come back to council, there'll be a clear connection between what you've heard tonight and what that response is prior to making any decision.
And one more question. When we're we're looking at. Hundred and twenty eight additional units. And and. You mentioned that there are smaller lots. Single detached twenty foot townhomes and more affordable housing. Now with that. Under Bill twenty three, that fall under that category or exit exemption of development charges? Is is. My first question. And my second question is, which we'll be talking about later on today is. Building fee increases. The twenty six percent that we're we're looking at increases. Does that? Because this is already in 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 the works, does that? Omit this project from those type of fees or? Thank you.
Through your worship. As far as future building permit fees, those fees are levied at the time that the application for the building permit is requested. So whatever the current fee is at that point, because it might be three years or so before they they start building some of these. So whatever the current fee is, it's time building permit, that's what gets charged. There's no grandfathering of fees. On the development charges and waiving development charges under Bill twenty three. I don't think we've had a request for any of these units to apply to that. And as a town, we. Developers don't ask for a waiver of development fees, but so far, to my knowledge, they have, we haven't been asked to waive any development fees.
Thanks, Mr. Cameron. I think I can just elaborate on the specific on the development charge question with Bill twenty three. And and just to step back to clarify, through the proposed revisions, it's a total increase of sixty five units from what's currently approved. I know it's a bit confusing in the tables, but today it's approved for two hundred and two. And we are proposing now a total of two hundred and sixty seven. The the question about the development charges, the those changes are still kind of fresh off the books. It's my understanding the you have to meet the province's definition of what I'll call truly affordable. Units in order to be completely exempt from development charges. From what I've seen, especially with freehold product. I've not seen a development able to achieve that. It's typically you need to seek some government subsidies and usually it's sort of private-public partnership. They have also identified, you'll see certain percentage discounts on development charges. Those are applicable if you're doing purpose-built rental. And there's different percentages based on the the bedroom size of the units. So within the proposed development here, all the units are proposed to be freehold for sale units, not purpose-built rentals. So they wouldn't. Qualify for those percentage reductions in development charges. So I hope that helps answer your question.
Thank you very much, Council Ball.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a little bit of concern about. Exiting off onto William. It is pretty close to the intersection and that already during the day, I know that one of the members of the public mentioned that the study had been done. In the evening, which I agree with the member of the public during the busy daytime, it's that. Intersection is already almost impossible to yield on. I can't imagine having a bunch of industrial trucks trying to go off onto William. I think that may be another Highway twelve. Entrance needs to be considered at least. And or a traffic study done during the day because I think that that William Street is. Busier during the day than that in the evening from what I've seen.
Thanks. Any comment?
Thanks, and that's a great question, counselor, and I'll certainly take that back specifically to our traffic consultant who completed the study. I suspect we can get a much more detailed response out of them. I do understand they did. Kind of standard procedure with traffic studies is the look at an AM and a PM peak period of time, kind of the morning and afternoon rush hours. So I do understand that there was work done at both of those times and they do speak to AM and PM peak, but your question about. Especially in an industrial park during the daytime, I can certainly take that back. I will point out the alignment of where that comes out was intentionally designed to align with the street across. It's generally frowned upon from a traffic safety. If you have offset intersections, typically we do everything we can to align those. The there were some recommendations in the traffic impact study for some improvements along Highway twelve, specifically left turn lanes for eastbound traffic. To help with those increases. And the MTO, I will point out, did specifically provide comments early in the process when we submitted. And they were very clear that they would not permit any new accesses onto Highway twelve. And in my experience, the MTO is very strict with regulating access directly onto the highway. So a couple of things out of that, that forced us to look at providing the accesses to the west and the east street, Brandon and William. Another comment they had requested was we, when we look at placing where Street A goes. That we tried to provide it in a way that some other parcels could potentially gain access off it in the future to again. Reduce access off of Highway twelve. So that Street A has been configured to keep that in mind as well. So we'll take the question about the William and daytime traffic back, but just thought I'd provide that at this moment.
Thanks and follow up.
Thank you. That's great to hear what we don't see, I guess, from the MTO perspective. I guess from staff perspective, is there any? Thing in our works or ideas that would be widening that road at any point? Because I think that's one lane. Towards the intersection. So having trucks trying to treat to turn on one lane. As well as I know that that's the subdivision and I I see that you guys have aligned that as much as you can. And I think that it's. I guess, considering the MTO's perspective of not adding something onto Highway twelve, that's really the best you're going to get. But that is my concern is that it is one lane closer to that and trying to have. Industrial trucks turning and holding up that traffic is is concerning to me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Just looking at Street A, I know you mentioned that there there may be a different access point at some point. And I think from the fact that. From the fire services perspective, I think there needs to mean look at consideration for another entrance. For emergencies and stuff like that for fire. So I think we need to, you know. I'm not quite sure whether that's taken into consideration and just in terms of the proposed. Another access into onto Street A, either from Highway twelve or. I guess King Street, I'm not quite sure, but at least there's a consistent flowing of of traffic for emergency. And has that been looked at also from? From your perspective?
Through your worship to Deputy Mayor, what's not showing on this plan along the left side of that drawing is that. Street A is connecting with an existing street Brendan Street to the west. So in actual fact, you know. There is that access direct access to Highway twelve, you know, beside the TRW plant there, just to the east from Brendan Street, that would go up and link with Street A. And then head east over to William Street. So it'd be almost a U-shaped arrangement when you take into can take into account. Those connecting streets north, south on either end of the development, but Street A is connected to both ends for emergency access already.
Thank you.
Thanks. And just a reminder that William Street is a dedicated truck route in our community, has been for a very long time. So that's an important one. I had a quick question. It kind of relates back to the first question Deputy Mayor had. Kind of about the soggy nature, and I think we've heard this from residents as well of. I guess what would arguably be the lowlands when compared to pristine. With the addition of this substantial stormwater management pond. Would it be fair to say that it's going to somehow, you know, help dry out the land that where all of these homes are proposed to be? Built on or are these going to be similar to other subdivisions we've had built on kind of former soggy? Lands where the, you know, I know people that have homes there and they're they're built or built pump, pardon me, voting coming out of me. There are some pump never quits running. It's pretty much running, especially in the spring. It's twenty four seven. So just wondering if the impact of the elevation changes you're making in the stormwater management pond. Will have a drying effect on those lands where you're, you know, concentrating and intensifying to your credit. This development.
Thanks, and that's an excellent question, Mayor Gordon. So again, I'm a planner, I'm not a professional engineer, but at a high level, I can answer your question. And yes, it will alleviate existing. Surface water issues in the area. What you might, if you walk through the property today, what the conditions are in the site. Don't reflect necessarily the the elevations or the conditions when the subdivision proceeds to construction. So in in modern subdivisions. There's a number of new requirements that have been been implemented to avoid the issue you speak to with with some of the older developments we've seen where. You have some pumps that are constantly running, either if it's in the spring or or after any sort of heavy rain. So one is that. Now there's requirements, if you are proposing basements to have those above the groundwater table where historically that wasn't a requirement and that's where you saw basements actually going into the groundwater and that's where you see some pumps. Going and if there's a power outage, that's when you you'd see people having basements flooded. So newer requirements and you'll see a lot of new subdivisions. Will have fill brought in or cut fill activities in order to raise the site a bit to keep those basements up out of the groundwater. Table. When they do the engineering lot grading, it's also done so that the shapes, the site's shaped so that. Water flows downhill and and you know, very gradual grades will take water from the various. Sides of the site to the central stormwater management pond, just relying on gravity. So. To to answer your question in short, yes, the through the functional servicing and stormwater management reports that were submitted. And through the detailed engineering design. The site is is and will be designed and constructed to alleviate some of those existing drainage issues on the property.
Great, thank you. Counselor East, I I don't want to forget about you in my little virtual box down there. If you do have a question, please raise your virtual hand for me. And you'll pop up to the top. All right, and last call for questions, council or public or otherwise. All right, well, I see there's no further comments. I'd like to thank our members of our public for attending today for both both parts of these meetings. And I'll bring this public meeting to an end. And close it with the following motion, moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Bald. That staff report CSR twenty twenty three dash forty five public meeting draft plan of subdivision. Number MDT zero two two zero for sixteen five thirty three Highway twelve dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty three be received for information. All those in favor? Any opposed? Is that a bit of lag? Counselor East, are you in favor? In favor? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, just a little bit of video lag. Out in the bay. All right, well, that was short and sweet on the agenda. So a move by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Ball, that bylaw twenty twenty three dash forty six being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of this special meeting, council held June fourteen, twenty twenty three, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? That is carried. And last but not least, move by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Meritus, the special meeting council adjourned at five oh nine. PM. All those in favor? And that is carried. All right, this meeting is adjourned and we will return at five thirty, I believe, for a marathon session, as it were, with a very talkful agenda. Thank you, everybody.